All right. I'm going to call the planning commission meeting of January 23rd, 2025 to order. I am Chair Ellsworth. Can I get a roll call, please?
Chair Ellsworth.
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez Mejia.
Here.
Commissioner Bartel.
Here.
Commissioner Berlin. Commissioner Bravo.
Here.
Commissioner May, here. Commissioner Lawson is absent.
Would you please join me in the flag salute?
The United States of America and to the fallen for which you stand, one nation under one law indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I see we do not have minutes. Do we have business from the audience? Anyone online? Needs to discuss anything that is not on the agenda otherwise this evening. Hearing none? Communications from staff?
None at this time, Madam Chair.
All right, so today I would like to, you may have noticed that there's a little bit of change up here. I'd like to thank Commissioner Corning for her service. Commissioner Corning has decided to retire from the planning commission, so I'd like to thank her for all of her years. She and I have been on several different committees together, and I really value her input and the work that she's done for the city of Woodburn. Thank you, Sharon. In the meantime, I would like to welcome Commissioner Justin May. Commissioner May, welcome. Okay, tonight we have a quasi judicial hearing. We have one hearing before us. The purpose of this hearing is to ensure that all interested parties can offer relevant evidence to the commission in a timely manner and in an orderly manner. With that, I'd like to open the hearing for OR 24-09, conditional use 24-04, SA 24-05 for Les Schwab Tire Center Modernization. This is a consolidated application for proposed renovation of the existing buildings, parking lot, and landscape improvements, and construction for an expanded showroom. Do I need to take declarations first? Yes. All right. So are there any ex parte contact with the applicant or other individual related to this matter before us? Okay.
I have a question. They do service my car when it's needed. Does that, is that a problem?
They also service my car from time to time. Would that preclude you or anyone else from being able to make a fair and impartial judgment in this matter?
Absolutely not for me.
Me either. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you for bringing that out. Has anyone had any site visits other than going and getting your car serviced there? We've already disclosed. Okay. Are there any other conflicts or bias that would preclude you from making an impartial decision? Seeing none. Let's go forward. And are there any challenges to the disclosures that you've heard tonight, either online or in the room? Hey, seeing none. Would, Chris, would you please read the hearing statement?
Of course. Both Oregon Law and the Woodburn Development Ordinance govern evidentiary quasi judicial land use hearings and require that at the commencement of the hearing, this, a statement be read to all persons in attendance. The applicable substantive criteria for this land use decision are listed in the staff report and are as follows. These are from the Woodburn Development Ordinance, the WDO. So, WDO Sections 1.04.03, 2.03, 2.06.02, 3.01.03, 3.04, 3.05, 3.10, 3.11, 4.01.07, 4.02, 5.03.01, 5.03.02, and 5.03.03. The hearing will proceed in the following general order: Staff report, applicant's presentations, testimony in favor of the application, testimony in opposition to the application, rebuttal, closure of the record, deliberation, and decision. All testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards the applicable substantive criteria just stated or other criteria in a plan or land use regulation which the person believes to apply to this decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements of evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties the opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Failure of the applicant to raise a constitutional or other issue relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Any party wanting a continuance or to keep the record open must make that request while the record is still open.
Thank you. Do we have a staff report?
You do. Let me share my screen.
Right, and just for the folks at home, would you go ahead and give us your name and position here because it's a new face for most of us?
Yes, ma'am. Can you hear me online all right? Okay.
I can't hear you in the background.
Okay, my name is Heidi Hinshaw. I'm the Associate Planner. It's good to see you all. Good evening. I am here kind of tag teaming with Dan Handel, who you all know also. He did a lot of the work on this project, and he handed the baton to me as he went on leave. So, we're discussing the Les Schwab Tire Modernization, as you mentioned in your intro. The issue before you tonight, let's see if I can move this, is an action on a consolidated package of land use applications, as you said, conditional use, design review, and street adjustment. Les Schwab is looking to renovate their existing buildings and construct a 492 square foot expansion. The area is zoned commercial general. It's a 1.75 acre site, and as some of you already know, it's developed with four commercial buildings. The reason that we're here tonight is that vehicle repair is a conditional land use. Even though it's a commercial zone, it's within 200 feet of a residential area. Therefore, it needs you guys to review it. Even though it's been around for probably 50 years, they are doing a renovation, so it's important to look at it again. So the applicant's goals are to move the vehicle servicing operations indoors and to modernize the showroom and lounge. There's some details there. Basically, they're going to demolish some of the older architecture, like the service bay canopy. And I learned a new phrase working on this project, mansard roof fascia elements. I will show you a picture of what that is. And they're going to reconfigure the parking lot to bring it up more closer to code, so you'll see pictures of that in a minute. It's on the east side of town. This is 99. And just south of 214, I'm sure most of you know where it is, or all of you. So here's, you can see it's a commercial general zone, but it's right across the street from medium density residential, hence the conditional use permit. So this is looking south at the site, at the, at some things that I'll mention in a minute. But basically, this is a curb type sidewalk with a bike lane and no landscape strip. And this is one of the reasons that they applied for a street adjustment. They're going to take down this canopy and, oh, this is the proposal anyway, and to, to put this indoors. So hopefully that'll cut down on some noise for the neighbors also. Oh, and this is a mansard roof fascia. This stuff on the top. Now we know. I don't know, maybe you all knew. I didn't know. This is looking north from Hard Castle. So you can tell it needs a little love, so it's a good time. They're going to take this down. This is again looking at it from Hard Castle. And this is the curb type sidewalk along Hard Castle. And this is just to give you an example, idea of they're going to improve this parking lot. They're going to restripe it, put in landscape islands to make it safer to walk across it as a pedestrian, put in some ADA parking stalls, carpool of ample stalls. And this sign is actually existing nonconforming, and they're going to take it down. And you can see it better in this slide. They're going to, they're proposing to dedicate right of way along 99, and this sign will be within the right of way that they dedicate, so it has to come down. So this is what they're looking at doing. Basically, the, most of the improvements are right along here and then within this building, but the, yeah. So you can see kind of, there's not a lot of landscaping, but they're proposing quite a lot. They're proposing actually more than they're required to. So hopefully this will really improve the experience of everyone who encounters this structure. And these are their pretty pictures. Hopefully it looks something like that. So the process, this is their standard slide. There's analysis and findings which you all got last week. I do want to point out that I made a typo on the first page of the staff report. I mentioned EV parking stalls, and as part of our, we're working to find an amicable solution for this, those are no longer required, so just in the final decision, that'll be not in there. So the conditional use, again, it's required because it's across the street from residential. We do believe that the proposal meets the general criteria and factors for conditional use as conditioned, and we do recommend approval with conditions. The client has been great to work with, very amenable to talking things through, which I appreciated. The things that we focused on were safety for pedestrians, drivers, cyclists, customers, and then improving landscaping, both within the interior and along the edges of the property. The applicant agreed to the transit development fee towards transit costs, which will give the city some benefit for basically leaving the highway and the, and the street as they are. And some transportation system projects they're contributing proportionate share towards. And one of the things we asked them to do was to shrink the driveway off of Hard Castle. Right now it's really, really wide and kind of dangerous to cross, so we asked them to reduce that down to 24 and improve the sidewalk as they did so, so. Moving on to the street adjustment, we're kind of talking about it holistically here, but this is, this is the cross section for the major arterial, but really, this is kind of what we realistically hope the street will look like. This is for the whole city, but this is for the very specific section from Carl Road to Lincoln Street along 99. And essentially, all the applicant needed to do was dedicate right of way to be able to achieve this. And they did that, or they're suggesting that, they're proposing to do that. So again, with Hard Castle, this is kind of the dream for all service collector streets in town. However, this is more what we envision. So yes, a landscape strip, yes, a bike lane, and yes, a wider sidewalk. But again, they applied for a street adjustment to not quite do all of this, and this is what they're proposing, or no, sorry, this is what is existing, so. Actually, I think this is only five, so that's a little typo, but anyway, I made this pretty table. Both frontages, the applicant is requesting to dedicate right of way, maintain the curb type sidewalk, and they do want, they have a landscape strip on the other side of the sidewalk, so it kind of works out. And we support this because we didn't feel that it was proportionate, and a proportionate ask to have them remove 600 feet of existing curb type sidewalk based on the size of the project that they're proposing. So. So what our, our conditions of approval are to complete the right of way dedications and grant those street side public utility easements before building permit issuance, and to plant all the street trees on the other side of the sidewalk. Any questions so far? Okay, great. Oh, okay. Thank you, Colin. So, design review, these are some of the things that we required. There was some barbed wire fencing just from age old time. They're going to take that down. They're going to remove that sign. They're going to repaint the lot, do the ADA stalls, et cetera. So that was just the other third part of the application. So next steps. Oh, here we are. Clarifying questions versus me?
What are they replacing the sign with?
Ah, well, I think in that, back to that pretty sign that they proposed, there. I think they want to do a sign in the front. Now, they have not submitted a sign application yet for this, so we'll have to review that separately.
Okay.
But I think this is their idea.
Is that idea conforming to?
It looks a little high, but.
Um, we'll figure that out. I'm not sure.
But that would be a different design review.
Well, it'll be a sign review, yes, and I, I mean, it's a good point, Commissioner. It's, it is kind of, I don't know. Colin, do you have any thoughts on this?
So the drawing you see is conceptual regarding signage. We have a sign permit process that's administrative because the standards are pretty cut and dry and straightforward. So if it's too big or too tall, we'll be sure to tell the applicant before we issue a permit.
Okay, thank you.
And they're probably grateful that you asked that because they're listening. Any other questions?
The Hard Castle entrance, so they're just reducing, they're not getting rid of that entrance on Hard Castle, just reducing it to 24, is that?
That's right.
And how far is it from the curb too? Because it feels like when we're being a smaller town, that was fine, but as it's getting bigger, I know that there's been some comments on other applications regarding it being too close sometimes to like stop signs or curbs.
Oh, oh, I see. You're saying how close that driveway is to the intersection?
Yes.
I got you. Yes, we wondered that too, and we did check in, Dan, we, Dan did it. Dan checked in with ODOT, and they were actually okay with it. I guess it's right on the edge of being fine, so. Does it worry you?
Visually, it just looks closer, and I'm going to imagine that the part they're reduced will be on the side that's closest to the intersection.
That's a good point. We didn't lay that out in the conditions, but Frank, are you listening? Can you do that?
I am listening, and yes, we can. I mean, we've even been studying it lately where we think it's better for Les Schwab's access and use of that driveway to, to move it a little bit to the east so that maybe the far core, the far side of it aligns with the corner of the building that's closest to it.
Yes, yes. I think that's what the commissioner is saying also, so.
Right.
It's a little room for gears here.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And if I could interject, there is.
I think, I think I actually did it wrong, Frank. I apologize. I'm not supposed to. Can you hang on just a minute, and then we'll open it up to you? Okay, thanks. Any other questions?
Commissioner Bartel, do you have any questions?
Not so far.
Okay, thank you.
So leave that picture on. On the stuff information that was sent to us in the packet, it kind of mentions that other lot that has that exterior building and space. It seems like it's more for their use. The one that's kind of not highlighted on the side, yeah. So that's theirs, and part of it mentioned also just making sure that their addresses are unified. They're not making any changes back there. It's just kind of for their own deliveries, et cetera, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
They will not be, to be honest with you, I'm not sure if in your application package it said that they were going to be doing a streetlight. They are not going to be, they are going to be addressing the street lighting situation with Public Works during Public Works review of the building permit. Do you have any concerns or?
No, just processing it.
Yeah, sure, sure. Okay.
Real quick, just when I'm looking at this, this is the proposed design, right?
Yes.
I do see a designation there by the north entrance there that might be a sign there, separate from the one attached to the building, right? Is that what that says? Relocate the existing sign, maybe? From the question before, we were talking about where signage will be. That might be where it's moving.
So I'll say while she's looking, the plan has no meaning in terms of sign approval. The applicant could not construct something based on this drawing. A separate application and permit approval is required to do that.
Cool, cool.
Simply with its own drawings.
Removing it as part of the application right now.
Yes.
Okay.
Just the removal. Sorry, Commissioner May, I don't see what you're talking about, but I believe.
Okay, it was kind of right where that, the arrow was there, but yeah. Right there, yeah.
Oh, I see the relocate the sign, yeah.
I think that is the sign that they're going to relocate.
Yeah.
That's what it's pointing to, is the existing sign.
Okay.
The pole sign.
Right.
And they're looking at a monument sign in a different location, which probably will be under a different review, sign review.
Hopefully not for you guys, though.
No more questions?
No more questions?
No more questions.
Okay. Then I introduce Frank Rudloff, the applicant's representative, and thank you for your time.
Welcome.
Hi, everybody. The only, what I was going to say earlier was really about the sign, was just to point out that it is our intent with this, this process, this review process, to, to remove the sign from what will be the right of way and relocate, I mean relocate it outside of the right of way. I mean, that's, that was what we were communicating, but I understand that the removal is all that's being approved here, so.
Okay, thank you. Can I interrupt you just a moment? Can we get your full name and address for the record, please?
Sure. My name is Frank Rudloff. I'm with MCA Architects, and my, our office address is 812 Southwest Washington Street in Portland, Oregon, 97205.
Thank you so much.
And really, I think that Heidi has sort of covered all the bases here. I'm happy to answer questions if there are any about what we're proposing. I think that, you know, yeah, anyway, I don't, I don't guess, again, you're approving this or not. It will be approved with the sign permit, but the signage over the door, there is a sort of an intention to, you know, create a sort of a memorable iconic entry piece over the primary entrance to the building, and, you know, and so naturally, I guess naturally enough, oh, that's a great place to put a sign. So that's, you know, that's how that comes to be, and that's certainly what Les Schwab would intend to do, so. And, and I guess just to reinforce why, why they're doing this kind of project, I mean, obviously enough, the building's a little tired and could stand some renovation, but the biggest push for Les Schwab is to, to move their service base indoors and get their, get their folks out of the weather. And so that's, that probably drives this, this work more than anything else.
Thank you. Right now, I'm going to ask if there are any questions for the applicant before we move on. Okay, I'm going to ask if there is anyone in the audience, either in person or online, that wants to speak in favor of this project? Hearing no one? Is there anyone that wants to speak in opposition of this project? Hearing no one, there's not a reason for rebuttal? Any final questions for staff or the applicant? Seeing none, I am going to close this hearing. And we are now in deliberation. I think it's pretty straightforward. The design looks good. I'm excited that a long-term business is giving itself a makeover. I think it'll be great. I think moving it inside is good for your, your staff, but I also believe that moving it inside should cut down on noise for the neighborhood, and I, I don't have anything.
I appreciate the landscaping too.
I do appreciate the landscape.
I appreciate the improvement to the parking. That's one thing that has always been a little bit odd is, okay, I'm not sure where to park when I get there, so. I like that they're making it much more structured.
I do want to ask a quick question or make a quick notation that in our packet, it talked about an EV station, and I believe in our motion, we would want to exclude that, that an EV station is not going to be part of the conditional use, unless anybody here has some thoughts otherwise. Okay. In that case, I would entertain a motion. And frankly.
Dan, would you like a slide?
Dan usually gives us a slide.
Yes, I would like a slide to assist me in making the motion.
I will second you.
Oh, I didn't show the screen. Okay.
Getting there.
And, yeah.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the DR 24-09. Sorry, that was the one if you needed to make changes. Here you go.
And we do because we.
Actually, I believe, Chair, that it was not in your conditions of approval. It was just in the executive summary. So I don't think you have to change anything. Okay. I move that we recommend that the council approve DR 24-09 Consolidated Applications Package with the conditions of approval as recommended in the staff report.
All seconded.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously.
Oh, should I have said, and a signature prepared for the chair? Sorry, forgot that part. We really missed Sharon on that.
I don't hear the Assistant City Attorney, so I think we, we know that's meant. I don't hear the Assistant City Attorney, so I think we, we know that's meant. Yeah, you're, you're fine.
Okay.
The, uh, yeah, the final order will have the chair's signature.
Thank you all for your, your testimony. Appreciate it. With that, do we have any business from the commission? Do you want to introduce yourself or say any?
Yeah, yeah, no, I can. Uh, Justin May, uh, my wife and I, and now son, and now expecting son on the way, uh, in April. Uh, we moved back to Oregon here. It's been about two and a half years. Born and raised here though, originally worked sent me out to, uh, North Carolina for about five years, so. Um, but yeah, we're back. Wanted to, uh, make sure I was, uh, part of a, the growing community and part of, uh, of, uh, making kind of Woodburn the, the place to be. So started working on the Parks and Rec Board here for the last two years. Uh, mayor called me up and asked if, uh, if I'd be willing to kind of s- come into a vacancy here. So, uh, said absolutely, definitely new waters for me, but, uh, a bit excited and heard nothing but great things. I know we have a great staff here as well to support, so, um, just, yeah, excited to be part of it.
Yeah, well, welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Do we have any updates from staff?
Um, there will be more meetings, of course, but, uh, the number of applications that need your decision is kind of lightened a little. So it's possible there might not be a meeting in February, but I can't make any promises yet. But I'm pretty sure there'll be at least one in March, probably the first potential meeting date in March.
I'm likely to be missing both dates in March, just as an FYI.
Oh, okay, thank you. We will make note of that. Um, what's coming your way, um, would be a recommendation on an annexation, uh, for property south of the Boons Crossing subdivision. Or forget it, 100 something homes. Anyway, that's all the previews for now.
Okay. With that, I'm reading a case, a motion to adjourn. I make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
I hear a motion in the second. All in favor? Aye.
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 Meeting adjourned. Thank you all for your participation tonight and welcome.